Betsy, you're muted.
Oh.
I'm in your district too, and I just want to add, it's great to see the commission members. I missed you all.
Well, I'm just glad to see you because I've never seen you before, so.
This is from District Two. We're so glad to see you. We have a 2020 work plan that you've been working on for almost nine months. Typically, we have this meeting at the beginning of the year in January, and because of the change with Heather and Louis, it got deferred and then COVID hit, and it got deferred again. But you continued to work through the plan. And so we are here to confirm the 2020 work plan and maybe get some work done on the 2021. So Louis, do you want to guide us through? Do you have a document to share? And you are mute.
Let me share some content here.
And folks, we're going to go until about 11:45 at the latest. We have another item on our agenda.
So can you see the draft 2021-2022 work program? Is that what you're seeing? Okay, thank you. So these are items that are currently in the pipeline. They're either just finishing or are in progress to come forward. And the remainder of 2020, so we'll have the street standards update coming shortly. We also have listed other mandated reoccurring items. So we typically get the six-year citywide. That's still coming forward to council. Comp plan amendments are coming forward to hearing, and then they'll be going to council. These are all the projects that are now slated for a 2021 project completion. These are all, like I said, currently being worked on, either at behind the scenes or we're trying to get public input. So there'll be a draft downtown plan soon. Shoreline master program update is coming forward. The housing action plan is progressing well. These are, does anybody have a question regarding any of these other items that are already in progress? We have 20, the 2021 mandated projects, so these are reoccurring items. And then, as you can see, we now have some capacity in 2021 and in 2022 to start taking on additional projects. So I want to jump over to a list that was shared with Plan Commission. Plan Commission helped prioritize those. These are for discussion purposes only. Can everybody see this? So we tried to have the Plan Commission rank all of the projects that were on this list. And then good Plan Commission members that they are kind of all came up with their own unique way of ranking them. So this is my interpretation of generally things that they said that they were valued to bring forward. They fell into a couple of different categories. Housing code changes that wouldn't require a comprehensive plan amendment. Some of these have been left over after the infill housing task force from that wrapped up in 2018, 2019 were implemented. Some of these have been things that staff has found that may be impeding additional housing. Or some of these are more controversial items that would need to be discussed to see if we want to take them on in future years.
Louis, I have a question. Some of these council discussed when Heather was here, and they didn't go anywhere. And so I would have you spend a lot of time, or the Plan Commission spent a lot of time, on something that council was just going to go, no, that's not going to work. We have mostly the same, five of us are the same. We have two new members, but I'm just looking at some of these. And they just, Heather brought them up and it was crickets. People just said, no, it's not going to fly. So I think we need to be a little bit more introspective about how we look at this and not spend a lot of time on something that's not going to go anywhere.
That'd be great. I think on a lot of these housing items, maybe we would have a separate study session and just deep dive into them to see if, you know, where council stands on it before we would start. I totally agree with that. I appreciate that.
Hey Louis.
Yes.
This is Councilmember Catherine. Yeah, I feel like we've been a lot of conversation in the last two months regarding not, these seem very narrowly focused, but around some pretty broad substantial changes to housing and zoning and densities and ADUs and a number of things to actually start addressing our housing crisis. And so I think we probably should have a study session to talk about those things. But, but I think, you know, some of this is so narrow that it would be a waste of time. In fact, we need to talk about some of the broader issues that need to be addressed right away.
And thank you. One of the things, this is Councilmember Mum, one of the things Louis and I met last week on this that I thought would be helpful with the Plan Commission's input is what do they think is going to really move the needle? How many of these changes are going to get us to our ultimate goal quicker? While they're all probably worthy to review, for instance, ADU changes, I think we've maybe processed less than a dozen a year ago. So I think we have to kind of look at what are we going to get the most bang for the buck in terms of prioritizing our time? Not that we can't get to these, but I do like the idea of a study session, Louis. Because of Council and Commissioners. Commissioners, are there anything on this list that you think really would be a big change for the city that would really bring us to our housing goals?
Well, for me, you know, I looked at the whole ADU thing, and I know the Sustainable Action Subcommittee has been doing a lot of review on, on ADUs. And when I've looked at the ADU code myself, considering it for my own use, there's a lot of constraints within that code that I think are real impediments to development, that are keeping people from utilizing it. And so to me, the nice thing about it is that it's a very focused project. And I think it can move the needle. Will it move the needle as much as some other things? Probably not. But some of the other things are so broad in scope and will be ultimately so controversial that I think there'll be a lot more challenge in the implement, particularly as we get a little bit further down into the list.
Good input. Thank you. Others? All right, back to you, Louis.
Sorry, I was going to jump in real quick. This is Todd. Yeah, so thank you. I think one of the helpful things here was to provide these very discreet, probably more implementation level items, but be able to cluster them in a way that is relevant to have discussions. You know, part of, as we were coming up with this list, part of the discussion was what items obviously would show up are opportunistic when, when, you know, there's, there's other things that are influencing, taking action on them, whether it's funding or so forth. But also what would be the long-term comprehensive plan, even though we're still, you know, four or five years away from starting to deal with the, you know, the periodic update? Are there things that we can start talking about now so that we're better prepared in a couple of years? So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Anyone else before we continue down this? All right.
I have one, Candace, you may not have been aware that Council President did send us an email regarding housing code changes. He wants to make sure that we're addressing, not the suburban model, but a transit-oriented, so prioritizing transit-oriented and more density and not the, you know, suburban five miles out of town model.
And I think we'll get into that on the 2020 work plan, but I'm glad, thank you. I'll look for that email because we do have, four of us on the council are on the central city line, and that thing is moving fast. And when that opens up, we're going to have a lot of pressure for some huge opportunities that I hope the city can be ready for. It's coming quicker than we think. So go ahead, Louis.
Well, that's perfect timing. So the next level of discussion items were the transit-oriented development, focusing on the central city line, and then on the rest of the high-performance, future high-performance transit system that STA is putting together. So that would be looking at a whole host of development regulations to parking, to other capital facility needs to help support density and development and support that transit system. Below that are the housing items, possibly housing code changes that might require a comp plan amendment to modify existing housing policy to help enable the codes to be able to occur. Some of those that have been discussed and other communities have been exploring, you may have read about Minneapolis and Portland, opening up different housing types in single-family areas or in lower-density environments. A couple of years ago, our PUD ordinance was amended, I think 2006, '07. The allowance for other non-residential uses in there, or apartments, for example, in the R4 to 10, were removed from that. That brought it in the alignment with what the comprehensive plan is saying. There's been some desire from a few developers to rethink that. And maybe that could be tied back into helping to create new centers for them. So it's part of an overall look into, those are a heavier lift item. Staff has wanted to continue to have packages of annual code, development code amendments, things that we've found that are problematic or need to be interpreted better or that need to be updated, things that have been missed. And so here's a small list of those type of items. There's some sign code clarity. There's been discussion in the past about short-term rental update, trying to get a better handle on how those are being taken advantage of in the city. The bicycle parking code hasn't been updated for many years. One thing that's missing from that, that the Bicycle Advisory Board has found is that when a tenant improvements are done for a change of use on a site, right now, we don't require any additional bicycle parking. So they would like some minimal amount of additional bike parking added back when uses change. And there's always ongoing discussion about center and corridor parking requirements, possibly even adjusting the height limits in some of the denser center and corridors. We've had the North Bank Subarea Plan underway. It's been kind of quiet now during COVID, so it would take some public process to revive that, get property owner input, and have that kind of daylighted once again.
Louis, what's the estimated time for the podium to open? That's going to have an impact on the North Bank.
Yeah, I believe that would be next fall, or yeah, around next summer or so is what they're suggesting.
That might be something to consider with the reopening of everything that North Bank's going to be popping.
Yeah. I'm going through this pretty quick. Any comments from anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go, Councilmember Caneer. Oh, okay, we'll do Commissioner Francis and then Councilmember Caneer.
Okay, sorry. I'm, I think that completing the North Banks, since we have so much time already invested in it, I think it would be great to bring that to completion.
Thank you. Councilmember Caneer.
Louis, I know a priority for Councilmember Strat, she's not here, who has worked on this a long time, and for Councilmember, Council President Beggs has been the name change for Fort George Wright Drive, and I don't see that on here anymore.
So Council Office has submitted that to our current planning section, and we're getting underway on that. It'll be, actually, the current planning section is going to take that on and run that through Plan Commission and Council. So that's already underway.
What is the timeline on that, Louis?
I can get back to you with that. I'll have Tammy send out information on it.
That would be wonderful. And can you have them contact Lisa Gardner also in our office so she can work to get that information out to the community? Because there's been some confusion. I don't think they understood that we had this underway and it's in process. So that would be great. Thank you. All right, so other comments on this? I saw other people wanting to jump in.
I, this is Gwen. I just had one, one thing that I wanted to mention. It kind of goes back to what Todd said. As far as the periodic update, I'm going back to this additional housing types in single-family and other zones. To me, that's a huge issue, and the single-family policy that's in the comp plan, and you know, the comp plan is kind of built around several policies about this. And so I'm wondering if something like this is better left for a periodic review, or maybe we could start now, but then leave it. Because I think that's a huge conversation. I think it's going to be very controversial if you want to go down this path. And I just think we owe it to the public to be able to have a great, big, huge discussion about this. So that's my only comment.
Councilmember Mum?
Yes, go ahead.
So supporting what Joanna's saying, is there, is there a possibility that we could get somewhat of a mandate from the council on where we could go in two or three years with that, those type of topics? So that we know we have some sort of compass?
Yeah. So what we'll do after we've had this discussion today, we will finalize this and prioritize it and adopt it. And that will, we'll work with you in concert on a work plan. So it'll be actually an official decision by the council, and we'll do it again in January. And when we do this, and I'm expecting Louis, you'll probably work with, we kind of go out, it was almost a two-year plan, right? We don't want to stick with one year. Do you want to explain that, Louis?
Yeah, let me jump back to the other document. So we are trying to map out the next two years, 2021 project, completion projects. And like I said, could possibly be an additional project plotted in here that we could try to have wrapped up early next year. It doesn't have to be housing code changes though, which is one thing thrown out there. The other would be additional items to put in the pipeline for 2022 also. You can see how many we have coming forward in 2021 for the rest of this year. And there are, there's going to be capacity there already opening up because we've just finished the U District, South U District plan. And once we get the street standards completed, we're going to have additional capacity. You can see these early projects in quarter two of 2021, we're going to have several things start getting wrapped up. And then that will free up additional capacity for the projects also.
Does that help, Todd?
It doesn't. I'll maybe jump in when we get into other areas, so thank you.
Yeah.
So if that wraps up comments, this isn't, so completion of North Bank. We've had a standing item kind of in the back of our minds is to continue to do center and corridor planning. Some of these fall on transit lines, so some of that can be folded together with the transit-oriented development. Some of them do not directly have as good a transit, high-performance transit access in the future. But here's the list of all of the centers where we really haven't gone in and done detailed center planning, like we had started back in 2002. A couple of these projects, the Perry Center and the Perry Center, Monroe Corridor, were put on the back burner from this last work program when Heather left and when COVID hit. So we think some of the things like neighborhood planning and center planning really need a lot of public involvement. And some of that, we're not sure is conducive until we can meet more in person with the public.
My comment on Perry and Monroe is that's really a housing component phase two. So the public engagement on the, the meat, the heart of it has already been done. And at least speaking to Monroe Corridor, what we were looking for there is there's so much pressure outside of the very narrow business district and not enough transition. So what we're seeing is we're not getting the lift off the planning that we had done because we aren't allowing for different housing types to transition between the two. And it's already happened, so many of them have gone rentals. So it's just ripe for the picking. It hits the housing, supports transit, and supports the center. And I think the community engagement piece has already been set up, at least on Monroe, quite intensely. So I think that one is actually a smoother, easier process. I'd like to hear from the South Hill representatives on what they think Perry's capacity is for that.
If I could, and Betsy, unless you want to jump in first, Jacoby's been going to, my assistant has been going to their meetings until COVID hit. So he's got a really good sense of what some of their issues are. A lot of them are centered around parking. As you probably know, Perry Street went through a transformation and has become quite gentrified now. So the housing stock has gone up in price, pushed a lot of people out. Density is probably not what it could be. There is underutilized buildings and land there. So it has to be looked at more comprehensively with transportation, land use, what is being allowed right now, and certainly a transition zone between higher density and single-family. So all those components are, they were just kind of getting steam and then COVID. Betsy, did you want to add?
Well, I want to add, if someone could give me a little bit of clarification on what the mini-center comprehensive plan designation is. What is that, my education?
So scattered around the city on smaller kind of commercial areas that weren't large enough in 2001 to be designated a full center, were designated this kind of in-between category with the thought that eventually the city would take a look at them to see if they wanted to nurture them into a center or if they would just stay a neighborhood retail area.
So I will go back to the, and those mini-centers, we addressed 20 years ago with the comprehensive plan, and they are, they're a little difficult to implement, and you have to be kind of careful where you put them because they really butt up against traditional single-family often. So they definitely need some attention in how you do it. You have to be a little careful there. But back to Perry and Monroe, I'm just wondering if there's some similarities there, Louis? If we couldn't bundle this, especially on the transition piece coming off of a corridor, if we're going to have, instead of doing them each separately, use them both as a transition program and looking at some zoning changes that could apply to both? We might be able to package those up. What do you think?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, Monroe is going to be on a high-performance transit line too, so we could look at it from that lens also.
What do you think, Betsy and Laurie? Do you think we could do that, just speed it up?
I think that would be great. And I think we could learn from both areas and maybe get more bang for our buck because we can look at both and adapt and trade off what works for one, may not work for the other. But we'll learn as we go through that process. So that'd be great.
And I, oh, good. Okay.
Because Monroe has a different, as you guys all know, a different transportation path than Perry, and it's just so narrow right there, right by elementary school, which is not Monroe's challenge right now.
Right. And what we're feeling though is this, I think the same pressure, because I've spent time in Perry, where we have businesses very active up against traditional neighborhoods, but then the dynamic is changing and the property values are increasing very quickly. And folks want to capitalize on all that vibrancy, but we don't have the zoning that allows them to do that, nor do we have the protections for the single-family. And so what happens is some of these just turn into rentals that aren't taken care of. And that doesn't help the businesses or the neighborhoods. So supporting the neighborhoods and supporting these comprehensive plans, I think we could get a lot of housing changes just out of Perry and Monroe, and there's a lot of pressure and interest in that as well. So the mini-center comprehensive plan designation, I'm not sure how much housing you'd get out of that. What do you think, Louis?
Some of these are kind of getting older. They're passed over, such as Government Way and Sunset Boulevard. That's been on the council's, popped up on the council's discussion a few times, that location. There's a few of those around the city that have some potential. The other ones, yeah, are smaller and butted up against, single-family may not have as much potential.
Well, I think these, Perry and Monroe are kind of halfway shovel-ready. Government Way and Sunset, that's kind of a brown field in a way. It might take longer to get that fired up. So I don't want to stay on subarea planning too long, but I'll also call out Five Mile and North Town. Those are around business centers. And I just spent time at North Town. Has anyone been up in North Town lately? It's scary, sad. I'm seeing a lot of for-sale signs around the rim. We need some planning, a lot of parking lots. We need some planning to support that. And if we can put in some high-density housing around that, that's going to be a potential high-performance transit, already on division. So I'm kind of looking at those centers and corridors, which ones need business and housing support to kind of rank it? Do we want to rank those, maybe? Plan Commission, what do you think?
I could keep my thoughts for a moment on the mini-center comp plan. I know we've had some parameters that might have limited us in the past, but I think going forward, we should pay attention to the changes in the, in the communities because of COVID. I think some of these mini-centers should be more of a focus to kind of, I don't know, bring the community smaller and closer to their home. I think that's something that we might be looking for, looking to do in the future. So maybe we should pay a little bit more attention and change some of the parameters that have limited those, the growth of those mini-centers.
I think, Tom, you bring up a really good point. And when we had discussions on this 20 years ago, there's a concern on viability because they are small and often there's one owner or a couple owners. And so some of them make it and some of them don't. And we have to find if they have support. It kind of depends on what they put in there too, doesn't it?
It's a tough situation right now, but I might be bringing back the law and law that we've been running for 20 years.
Right. Thank you for that.
I will have to just jump on that, Candace, what Tom just said, because the neighborhoods are looking out. Specifically speak to the East Fifth Avenue, which would be a mini-center going on down to our cat revitalization. But currently zoning and planning does not allow that. But the desire and interest is, and people want to be in that cluster neighborhood field. So I think it's something worth to look at again. I'm sure that will come to the Planning Commission in a not-too-distant future.
Okay, yeah.
So I wanted to talk too about, let's not overlook overlays. We did an overlay on Fifth, a parking overlay on Fifth. So that might be a stopgap for some of these mini-centers where we can do an overlay and skip the long game with the, with a comprehensive plan change. So I, I don't know what you think about that.
Another point would be possibly, Tom, to engage the neighborhood in going for grants to enhance those mini-centers that currently exist. They, what they may need is more streetscape, trees, you know, more beautification. The zoning may be fine, but maybe what they need is an investment, you know, by the city to create better sidewalks, better access, just more walkability. It might be something to kind of analyze. I'm just wondering back to the subarea planning, there's quite a list there. I want us to keep moving on the centers and corridors, implementation. Uh, I call out North Town because that's District One and District Three. Actually, I think technically it's in District One, but District Three supports that. Um, also, on the North Nevada, is that North Point, is that what that is, Louis? You're on mute. You're still on mute. You're on mute.
Yeah, one of them is at Lincoln and the Paddas, up above on the hill, and then the other one is at North Point. Both areas have some vacant land opportunities and, and some redevelopment opportunities.
Commissioners, do you have any sense of which ones are top priority there in centers and corridors for implementation?
The only thing I want to bring up is Fourteenth and Grand, that was on, uh, the, the, um, South Side Coalition when they did their planning. Certainly took into consideration of Fourteenth and Grand, how important it was. I know the neighborhoods up there have been very anxious to, uh, get that started. Um, it is the gateway to the South Hill, so I would, you know, I would say that's, um, uh, something to really consider. As far as housing goes though, if you're focusing on housing, I think, I mean, I think you're right Candace, about the opportunities maybe other places. Um, it's all single-family basically, and some apartments and whatnot, and all those businesses around Fourteenth and Grand. But, um, anyway, it's just something to keep in mind, that I think the, the South Hill people up there are anxious to get, get that, um, planned for.
So I think if we put the housing lens on there, North Town really calls out to me because it's both districts, and it has everything, it has parks, it has shopping, it has restaurants, it has healthcare close by. Um, what do District One folks feel about that?
Absolutely, I think District One needs a lot more, uh, attention and planning. Um, but I also would, would call attention to, to Hilliard and the Greater Hilliard area as well. Um, and I see we've got on here the NEPDA, which, um, I guess we'll get to later, but, but there's, uh, a lot of, of thought and interest into expanding the housing interest, uh, in, inside the NEPDA as well.
Councilmember Mom?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Uh, this is Todd, I would add, I would, I would advocate for, um, projects that, that, uh, really help demonstrate mixed-use opportunities. And of course, that overlaps with transit-oriented and so forth, but ones that really can, can demonstrate those projects and viability.
Okay, so I'm thinking, Louis, we should maybe put together a draft, if it wants to come from the Plan Commission, to prioritize those centers and corridors. And if we wanted to do the same with a mini-center, to show what we have and what work might be able to be done, because then we can have a prioritization list, so we aren't discussing these specific ones, we could have a, a pretty good lens. You can hear where, I think we've got pretty good coalition here with commissioners and council on what the priorities are. I'm hearing housing, transit-oriented, business, support. Does that sound good, folks?
Yeah.
Anything else on this, sub-area planning?
Councilmember Mom, one last thing I put in there, um, is, is, is there a broad theme related to Councilmember Keneer's comment of overlays? That's, that's, as I've expressed, it's one of my major concerns, is that overlay planning, um, is creeping a little bit into design review, design guidelines, and, and, and maybe some restrictive zoning. So maybe as a broad topic, if we addressed it, both the opportunities and challenges of that.
So you, you're thinking about the implementation of it?
Well, I, 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 I see we don't, we don't have overlays on this, on this list, including the historic preservation ones, but Councilmember Keneer was referring to a different type of overlay that also could be opportunistic in terms of, of, um, of development, so I just, I, I just put it back to the broad topic of overlays and having discussion about opportunities and challenges.
Councilmember Keneer, do you want to discuss any further overlays that you anticipate or thought on that?
There we go, um, well, Todd, thanks. And, and I was specifically referring to, um, Fifth Avenue that it already had, it's, it would be technically a mini-center, but it's already had a parking overlay, and I'm thinking that it might be a quicker, uh, get to where they need to be if we do an overlay of some of those mini-centers instead of a, an entire, um, comprehensive plan designation, at least to start with. So we get a sense of, of what's possible there without going through a drawn-out process. So I was just, I was throwing it out there as a shortcut to get some of these places to be where they need to be, and then they can move on from there after they've lived with the overlay for a while, then move on to the next step. That's just, I was just throwing it out.
Also, the Plan Commission is empowered to create task forces and special committees through their bylaws, uh, to look at, um, doing research, giving feedback, uh, providing, um, maybe some proposed changes. So feel free, if you see something like that, that's very focused and narrow, that's maybe not on your work plan, feel free to create something like that and work with staff and just let us know. But it can be very helpful to you, so you don't have to carry all the weight. And maybe you could get some, uh, some experts on that as well, to help. And there might even be some funding available potentially, you don't want to spend your money, Louis, but, uh, if you needed a consultant. So please, um, consider digging into your bylaws, looking at your powers, you have a lot of power, uh, and reach, and we'd, we'd be happy to support you in doing that, we all love planning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so jumping back into this table, we, uh, we are getting quite a few requests, and we just processed, uh, CC three overlay around, uh, Gonzaga Prep. But we're getting, uh, requests to do, allow more housing opportunities in some of the industrial zoned areas of the city. And there's been concern about pushing out, um, kind of smaller, uh, lower-rent areas of industrial uses. I know other cities have been taking a look at the same issue and coming up with some policy around that. And so we're getting to the point where I think the city needs to take a look at that. This is more staff-driven, uh, because of these requests we're getting. We have a specific request to look at a CC three on North Sprague Avenue, kind of the Sprague Center up against the rail line, in and around the McKinley School, for example. So, and then we, as Councilman Cathcart stated, there's been some interest to look broader at the NEPDA, the same area.
Yeah, can I, I will say, with, with regard to the, uh, uh, East Sprague area there, so I spoke both to the developer as well as ESBA, the, the Business Association around there, and there are some competing views as to how that area might, might need or want to transform. Um, I, I, um, I definitely think that, that we need more housing in that area, we need more housing across the city. Uh, but, uh, the, the business district there is concerned about losing some of that inner-city industrial land, and they have some concerns about safety with regard to residential being closed to industrial. Um, but if you talk to the developers of the McKinley School, you know, they, they think they've got a great plan, and they also don't believe that their project is, is going to pencil further without being able to, uh, provide residential as part of that, especially now that office space is not really a big need, which was originally part of their plan. Uh, and so, anyway, there's some competing views there, I think there's going to have to be some mitigation, but, um, but definitely there, there is an opportunity, I think, in, in the East Sprague area. And then with regard to the NEPDA, I will say, um, I'm, I'm vice chair on the NEPDA board, and we've been having some substantial conversations around how we can best utilize, uh, uh, large portions of, of the NEPDA, especially in light of the fact that recruiting, uh, some of these large industrial or, or even small industrial, light industrial businesses is a real challenge right now. Um, and the fact that we do need a substantial number of, of housing units in the, in the city. So we are looking at ways that we can transform portions of the NEPDA to be, uh, kind of mixed-use, uh, uh, commercial residential-type neighborhoods, and, uh, and really kind of put that area to, uh, to a different, but maybe even better, better use than originally, uh, visualized.
Uh, my comment is I go back with Louis and Joanne, uh, who were with me when we first adopted the percentages for the, uh, centers and how much we would allocate toward industrial. Twenty years ago, uh, it's my recollection that we were losing industrial space at a rapid pace to other types of strip mall commercial, uh, other types, types of building, massive, you know, apartment tracks, apartment boxes. And so we worked very hard, and I, I think we even had a consultant come in talking about, what is a viable amount of industrial space? And we, we looked at where it sits around the community. Uh, there's certainly some in my district, there's some in District One, not so much in District Two, uh, but a little bit. And so we came up with a targeted percentage, and I believe that lives in the comprehensive plan document. I'm just wondering if this discussion maybe makes sense to do on the broader overview that you were discussing, Joanne, uh, when it comes to the appropriate targeted amount? So what do you guys think?
Um, and I'm glad you brought that up, Candace, isn't there a, a growth management act requirement that you have so much industrial land? And I know we did land use quality analysis when we did the periodic update last time, and didn't we have, I mean, lots of industrial land, Louis, was that how that turned out? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, we have a lot of zoned industrial land out in the West Plains, um, that is vacant. Uh, and then there, there's kind of a different class of existing industrial areas that are providing opportunities for small businesses to kind of get a start or have lower-rent industrial area. Um, I think, uh, along Trent Avenue, North Sprague, the NEPDA, along those old historic rail corridors, provide a lot of that. And so there's concern about pushing housing or allowing other uses that would push out those kind of lower-rent areas that are already being served by good utilities for, for jobs.
But Louis, is, is the GMA requirements regarding, uh, industrial lands within the UGA? Or is it within, within cities of a certain size? My, my guess is it's within the UGA, which would be, you know, much beyond the borders of the city. Not to say we want to lose our industrial land in the city, per se, but, but speaking practically with the NEPDA, I mean, that is essentially that there as it is for quite a while. Um, and in the current climate and the current economy, I don't think there's anybody expecting to be, to see quite a few industrial uses being, you know, added into the NEPDA. And so the NEPDA both needs funding, which comes from development occurring, um, but also we need housing. And so I, I think that there's some other considerations as well.
So on this one, I'll just point to, I think starting at the top of the pyramid makes sense, uh, to look at that, that quantity analysis, uh, you know, whether it is inside the city limits, uh, or the UGA, I think we need to look at both, because we don't have any immediate plans to annex, uh, that I know of. We're almost seventy square miles, where our footprint is larger than the, than the city of San Francisco. So I, I think that, um, you know, it's something to discuss. The other thing we talked about, again, twenty years ago, was making sure it's not all concentrated in one area. We wanted to have, uh, it dispersed in different parts of the city, so we could have access for the workforce spread around. And so, um, a lot of it was loaded out with the West Plains. I'm not sure where the West Plains is going, it seems kind of on fire. So, um, the need seems to be ready to stop there, but I think NITA, once the freeway opens up, I could see a huge shift. Um, again, we don't have the exact timeline on that, but I think preparing for that is important and reserving enough industrial land, and we, you know, look to the NITA to help us decide what that looks like. Um, because you don't want to chew up what you're really wanting, um, to attract them with, with housing, and then they go, well, we can't be in there, because we're a processing unit, we can't do it next to housing. So it, it's a very, um, uh, a difficult process that we need to balance. That's why I'm thinking the periodic update might be better for this, but whatever, whatever you guys think.
I think it, I, I would agree, Candace, it needs a, I, I think it needs a big, broad look at citywide and within the UGA.
Any other comments on this, we'll move on to the next one.
So we have, uh, a few remaining neighborhood plans. Uh, the most interest so far we've had is from, um, Mini Ahha. They've been participating very heavily with the North Spokane Corridor project with Wash Dot. Um, so I think that they've had a lot of opportunity to give input on the freeway project and the Children of the Sun Trail, so they may be getting ready, uh, to do further neighborhood planning. Um, the Balboa South Indian Trail neighborhood has done, expressed a little bit of interest in it, along with Shiloh Hills. So these are kind of in the order of, of what we've heard from, for interest so far. Kind of wrapped up into this is, do we continue to work on the Fifth Avenue East Central area, which is really kind of folded into that neighborhood planning style project also?
So, so Louis, I will tell you, we were, the East Fifth Avenue, we were in a meeting with Wash Dot this morning, uh, around opportunity, and they will be regen the neighborhood, uh, in 2021 as they prepare to plan out, but that neighborhood between the two parks, Liberty Park and Smart Park, and Underhill Park, the other park, the opportunity for growth in that pocket, uh, i- is amazing. So I like to keep this in front of the planning committee for opportunities and wherever the challenges are, but it is unique, and that area has had a lot of disinvestment going on. So I believe it is time that we seriously look at how we could zone to make it a place that is investable, uh, for housing and what else needs to be in that area.
So, um, Councilmember Mom, if I may tag on to that, in addition to that, Councilmember Wilkerson, we need to make sure that that area is well-served by transit, because I believe right now it is not. And so that also needs to be a priority, and for the four of us who are on STA Board, we need to make that a priority. So I'm just, I'm grandstanding here, I just want to make sure that it's said, that it's about wraparound land use and transportation are looked at as one.
I'd like to set up a, I can only be with three of you, I, Councilmember Wilkerson's on this call too. I would like to, um, set up a separate, uh, connection with you, we're in the process of the TDP right now, and, uh, any amendments that we would do need to come forward in the next month, and we may need to add this, uh, to the TDP because of just what you talked about, Councilmember Wilkerson, the, the need is now, and it has emerged. Um.
Councilmember Mom?
Yes.
One more comment on that, of, although the, you know, the commission just recommended and the, and the council approved the sub-area plan for the South University District, you know, one area that, uh, at least I, I made the comment during the process was underserved, was towards the South, Southeast corner. And, and the request could be, can that be included in for further planning along with that across the freeways, we really address with the adjacencies on both sides together.
That's a Louis question.
And we haven't spent a lot of time thinking about that quite honestly, but the area south of the freeway, um, just, you know, south of ninety over to the Hospital District has been on the radar for, there's some vacant land and an opportunity to grow, and a mix of different uses. We've seen some housing and some office space go in there. Um, and so jumping over into East Central and then back into the U District, that seems to make sense.
So back to the remaining neighborhood plans, um, I'll, I'll tell you on the Balboa South Indian Trail, I just talked with, um, the neighborhood chair two nights ago. I might suggest you fold that in with the Five Mile Center Plan. That's really their neighborhood, and that's where they're getting the most pressure. Uh, there's a lot of transportation issues there, it's probably one of the more congested areas. You've got just about everything there, you've got mixed use, you've got transit, you've got schools. Um, and so, uh, you've also got a highway, that's a state highway along there. So I think when, when we get to the, uh, center plan for the Five Mile Shopping Center, I think if you folded that into the neighborhood plan, it might be a way to do both. Are you, I see John Deetsman nodding his head, John, you're from Indian Trail, tell us what you have to say.
Yeah, I agree with that, that makes the most sense. And most of their issues in that neighborhood is going to revolve around the Five Mile Shopping Center, I think. And so, yeah, doing those together makes a lot of sense.
Councilmember Mom?
Yeah.
I live out here too, and, uh, I, I agree, I think, and there's more and more traffic now. I live past Barnes Road, so I'm aware of all the traffic that's going up Barnes now, you know, since it was done, and, and, uh, so there's just a lot more of a connection there now, and I, I think that'd be a smart thing to do.
Greg, don't you live out there too? You're on mute.
Yeah, I, I used to. And the one thing I remember from living out there was just the intersection of Francis and Brooklyn Indian Trail, and how much that would bottom off as well.
Yeah, so lots of highway transportation issues, uh, there, so just a thought, Louis, just to bundle that together too. But then back to, uh, But then back to the Minnehaha-North Spokane corridor, I'm thinking that might need to stay high at the top, looking to my District One reps there. The North Spokane corridor is going to have a huge impact there, right?
Oh, absolutely. That's going to be a substantial impact. And I know currently there's a lot of issues that Minnehaha struggles with, as Councilwoman Burke knows, with freight traffic coming through their neighborhood, which hopefully will be offset by the North Spokane corridor. But yeah, I think that planning piece is going to be really important for Minnehaha. Hey, and then I was just going to add real quick too, on the subject of kind of combining some of these things, there may be an opportunity to do that with Shiloh Hills. Cliff's on here, maybe Cliff wants to chat about this, but Shiloh Hills as well as that Nevada-Lincoln area there, I mean, that basically is Shiloh Hills right there, and that was on the subarea up above. And then also North Point is pretty much Shiloh Hills as well. So all of that could probably be combined into one effort if the neighborhood would be interested.
Interestingly enough, the Lincoln area is a different category, Councilmember Kepka. That is a, what is that called? It's a workforce center or what's the title, Louis? It's a different category of center.
Yeah, I think we've got a neighborhood center and a district center up there.
I think it's an employment center, actually.
Probably employment, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a different twist on that, because we had Guardian there, and there was a big push maybe to put some other types of those kinds of facilities there. So I hear what you're saying, but they're kind of different animals in a way.
And also too, that property there to the east of Nevada, is pretty much all owned by one landowner, and it's actually technically within the NEPDA as well.
Okay.
So it's kind of a very interesting cross section.
Yeah, and I might just say too, again, I like the idea of bundling, but those two, North Point's built out, I mean, they've got high density, everything there, and that employment center has a huge amount of opportunity, but they're not up and running like North Point is. So we may want to look at doing North Point first, just because there's, it's ready to go. But I might mention, just on the neighborhood plans, I would think Minnehaha might rise to the top just because of the impact happening there. And Councilmember Burke, I'm thinking bicycles there would be important, transportation planning, shifting all the transportation there. And then the pressure, Hangman-Layton, tell us about that district team, folks. Is there a lot of pressure there for change for neighborhood plan, or could they wait for the others?
Well, we probably should be waiting until the study is completed with 195. And a lot of the concern around Layton-Hangman is traffic. I mean, it's, and a portion of Layton-Hangman is zoned ag, and they want to keep it ag. So Council President and I have been working with them, and will continue to work with them to make sure that their needs are met, but that is a complicated area. So I would urge us to wait until the 195 study is complete.
So you're okay to push that down?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
And in the grandstand, they have no public transportation down there? Oh, and there's that, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So do you feel like you have a sense of order here, Mr. Mueller?
Yes, yep. Neighborhood plans, definitely.
Any other input on the prioritization here, team? Thank you. Your local knowledge helps so much. Okay, Louis.
Well, that brings us pretty much to the end of it. Starting to anticipate, when would we tee up discussions around the 20-year or the next periodic update? We want the next periodic update to be at larger scale, look at examining how things are working, we need to make adjustments to certain areas of the plan. I put on the other page, at the very end, the mandated dates. Let's see here, that's not it. So the next mandated periodic update, a periodic update, the local community can choose to do just kind of the minimum, making sure they're still compliant with state law or do a larger one, that is due at June 2026. We're doing a shoreline master program update now, and that'll take us through this periodic area, but the next one won't be till 2030. And then we expect a substantial review of the UGA in 2025. So normally those start about three years in advance of that effort. So do we tentatively start thinking about, do we bump up a more comprehensive look at the comprehensive plan, or do we plan on starting that about three years when it's mandated? 2023, for example, or 2022?
That's not that far away.
Well, anywhere we can allocate toward it just gets it done in advance. Other things come up. So I would love to see your department fully staff, and we get ready to come out of this COVID. So we're ready to go as a community. So I'd just say that to the rest of my council members, when it comes time for budget, if we want economic recovery, we, in my opinion, to give Louis and his team as much support as possible in order to get these done and work with the planning commission staff if they can work to get us ready to come out of this. Louis paid me to say that.
So with regards to the 20-year comprehensive update, I mean, if we're looking at some pretty substantial housing changes that might occur in there, then, you know, maybe it does need to be bumped up a little bit. I mean, I said in a presentation on the Minneapolis Complan, I mean, their housing changes and their zoning changes were all focused around their complan, and I think it took them seven years to get from this kind of the early thought period to actual implementation. So it was not a short-term process. And so I think it needs to have a lot of effort dedicated to it. And I don't know if three years is enough.
This is Todd. I'd add, we at least need to have conversations so in case a mandate comes down from Olympia like it did from Salem, right? That cities need to be ready for that kind of change also.
Right. Okay, I just want to feedback, we got great input here. Louis, are we at the end of what you needed feedback on?
Correct, yep.
Commissioners, we are winding up our time together. Anything else we need to know? Well, stay safe out there.
Thank you for the time.
You too, thank you. We thank you so much for all your work. You really are creating a new city, and we really lean on you for that. So thank you for giving your time during this crazy pandemic and working out all the technology, and appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You're welcome to stay on and listen. We're transitioning over to Katie Myers. Hi, Katie. Long time no see.
Hi, everyone. So good to see familiar faces and new faces as well. So for those that I have not met on City Council, my name is Katie Myers. I am a program professional in the civil service department. And joining me today is our current interim chief examiner, Kelsey Pearson. And our goal today is, we want to give the service 101. I know that we have some newer council members that may not be aware of what we do, how we're structured, and how we fit into the organization. Some of the information may be new for folks, and some of it may be information some council members already know. But the goal is to get everyone on, and even playing field, do our sort of 101 today, and then offer an opportunity to come back to City Council and provide a more in-depth training on a topic or topics of your choice. So I've got about a 10-minute presentation. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Can folks see my screen? So today we're going to talk about what is civil service and what is civil service here at the city of Spokane. And we'll do a really brief history of how we came about here at the city. We'll also talk about the commission that our department serves and what are their responsibilities. We'll do a little overview of our staff, and then also talk about the rules that we're beholden to within our department, and then provide an example about how work flows through our department, and then have an opportunity for questions and discussion. So in a nutshell, civil service is an employment system based upon job-related knowledge, skills, and abilities. And such a system was created in the federal government to replace the notorious political spoils system. For who you know, or who you campaigned for, or who you were related to, had often been the primary criteria in employee selection. States and local governments followed by creating their own versions of such systems, or of such system. So what's sort of here at the city of Spokane is an independent branch, and we are here to ensure that individuals are employed on the basis of professional merit and demonstrated through competitive examinations. So we safeguard the integrity of the hiring process by keeping job opportunities free from political influence, fair, and open for all to apply. We also team up with job experts, which are going to be all the analysts in our department, to create competitive exams for candidates to show off their abilities. Candidates who pass the exam are objectively ranked and then added to an eligible list. A hiring manager is then given that list and is required to interview and hire off of that list. So classified and non-classified positions here at the city, about 95% of city positions are classified, meaning that they are protected by civil service and they have required open and competitive examination to be eligible for employment. The other 5% of positions here at the city are called non-classified, and those are going to be all of our appointed, exempt, temp season, and product employees. These positions are not civil service protected and are overseen by our human resources department. And I think it's important to note that sort of a byproduct or a result of the civil service system is that it provides continuity in our services to the community as we see appointed figures change every so many years in the organization. Sorry, I'm having a little technical difficulty here. There we go. So a little history about civil service at the city of Spokane. So civil service has been here since the citizens voted on a city charter that provided for in 1910. State laws requiring civil service for police and fire were enacted in the 1930s. Citizens then voted on a new city charter in 1960, replacing the former commissioner form of government, which had a reputation of political spoils, with the council manager system. At this time, it also significantly expanded civil service protections to all positions below department head level for police, fire, and all departments throughout the city. And then in 2000, citizens have voted to change, or did vote again, to change the form of government to strong mayor council and chose to leave civil service intact in the city charter at that time. So what are the roles and responsibilities of the civil service commission? Again, they're here to ensure that positions are open to anyone who wants to apply, regardless of their political affiliations, that candidates have the qualifications and appropriate skills to perform the jobs they apply for, that positions are earned off based off of merit. And the commission also upholds due process rights for employee discipline and termination, and this is to verify that actions were taken for cause. The commission should also be inviting city council mayor and department heads on their civil service merit system, as well as establishing and administering the civil service rules, maintaining a classification plan, providing oversight of personal status changes, and adjudicate employee appeals and complaints. So a little overview, ours has been governed by a five-member civil service commission. Two of our commission members are appointed by the mayor, or selected by the mayor and appointed by city council. Two are appointed by employee groups, and then those four appoint the fifth member at large. The commission adopts the civil service rules, directly appoints our department head, or also known as our chief examiner, and again, also serves as the quasi-judicial capacity for employee appeals of discipline, discharge, and other employee-related issues. The commission meets on the third Tuesday of each month, 9:30 a.m., in the city council chambers. It is open to the public, and obviously with COVID, we have adjusted, and the commission is meeting via WebEx as well. And then a quick overview of our staff. We, under the direction of the chief examiner, administer the rules. We have one chief examiner, five examination classification analysts, one office manager, one program professional, two admin specialists, and one clerk, three. We are a small and mighty team. And then just wanted to touch on our civil service rules. So what falls within the scope of our department? With the civil service rulebook, we are responsible for all the job classifications across the organization. We're also responsible for the creation of exams and eligible lists, promotions and promotional process, transfers and voluntary demotions, layoffs, and appeal rights. We are also beholden to state law, the requirements for public safety with regards to civil service, and this is a requirement for all public safety agencies across Washington. And then it's important to note that our rules are updated every so, every five years. 2021 rule review will begin, and this process does involve all the laboring units, management, and the civil service commission. And then I thought it was important to highlight an example of how work moves through our department, and I really wanted to show that we, as a department, can't operate within a vacuum. And a good example to highlight this would be if a manager wants to adopt a new classification. So the first step would be that a classification is identified at the department level. Civil service would then assign one of our analysts to create a new classification. We then work with the department and management to create, what are the job duties? What's the role of the work? What are the knowledge, skills, and abilities and minimum qualifications required for this position? This is a really essential step so we're able to recruit qualified candidates. And then after that, we would have management and the applicable bargaining unit sign off and agree. It then goes to the civil service commission for adoption. It then goes to human resources for salary review. It then comes back to civil service for test development. So this is just a great example of that majority of the work that we do within our department requires concurrence and collaboration with all of our laboring units, management, and the commission. So why should you guys care? Why is it important? And some takeaways that I wanted to highlight were, we are responsible for recruiting qualified employees. We are responsible for leaving positions open for all and anyone to apply. We also protect employees from unjust discipline, and again, providing that continuity in services to our community. And we're also mandated, mandated by state law to audit the public safety hiring process. So just some important things to remember. So that concludes my 40,000-feet, 10-minute civil service commission 101. I'd like to hear if there are councilmembers who are interested in discussing a civil service item in more detail and inviting us back, or if there are any questions or comments.
Hey, this is Councilmember Kepka, and I've got a question. I guess we can talk about it later if need be, but I have a strong interest in seeing more diversity that reflects our community within our police force. And so either within the rules as they exist today, or are there rules that we can change at the local level to really allow for more targeted recruitment of officers? That really is my concern and my question.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think we can definitely set some time to come back and dive more deeply into what are the state laws that we're beholden to within our department and what is currently being done as far as active recruitment for police. I don't know if, Kelsey, you have anything you want to add to that?
I just have a couple of things. I think that, you know, we are struggling just in general to recruit public safety, law enforcement in particular. It really used to be the case that if we opened it, they would come, and those days are over. I think that we're looking at more targeted I think that we're looking at more targeted recruitment for diversity across the board, certainly for law enforcement and our public safety positions, but just in general across the board. There's a myriad of things I think that we are starting or have started to implement and can do in the future that don't bump up against our rules or state law at all anyway. I think that we should be, I think that there's a lot of collaboration that we are starting to do with the police department directly, and there's certainly more to be done. So, I think that, I think public safety, police reform in general, what I sort of think we knew that was going to be a topic, and it's certainly something we can dive into more thoroughly on sort of the police officer process in and of itself is quite a, it's quite a process, and it's different from recruiting for anything else.
Let me ask it in a slightly different way. If we, say we have a recruiter here for SPD, and they identify one individual, great track record, you know, strong training background, et cetera, in the Seattle Police Department, and they say, "We want that person to come work in Spokane." What rules, or are there local rules that prevent that? And if so, what are those rules that we?
So, currently, yes, that individual would be, there's sort of three paths to become a police officer with the city of Spokane. You can be an open entry candidate. "I have no experience. I've never been in law enforcement." You take up a test, you get a score, you send us your scores. We don't do the testing for a police officer. We do that through a third-party agency. And if they're in selection range, we send their name over to the police department to start the screening process. They get an initial interview, they start filling out their background information. If it's somebody who comes from a different law enforcement agency, let's say Seattle Police Department, and we are seeing a small uptick in people from SPD because we know there's layoffs coming from Seattle, those are latter, that's what we call a lateral police officer. They have a different way in. They don't take a written exam. They fill out what we call a training and experience evaluation, where they get credit and points for how many years of service, what sort of service they did. I will tell you that from a lateral perspective, we don't get enough candidates to ever not send everyone over. All those names get sent to the police department. We never get, I only have probably eleven people on that list right now, so we send, we can send ten names over at a time to start the screening. But yes, there are some barriers for sure. We couldn't just identify, you know, a great candidate and say, "We want to hire you." There's still that pro, that civil service process, right? There's an application, there's some sort of a testing module, a ranking, they have to be ranked in some way and put on an eligibility list. But with, I, you know, to try to sort of say the glass is half full, even though our numbers are quite low for recruiting these days, almost everyone that applies for a police officer in any capacity will be sent over to the hiring department for possible interviews and background screening. So, that's a plus. But I will tell you, I mean, five years ago, we would open our recruitment and we would get, eight hundred and fifty people would apply.
Councilmember, welcome. Just trying to get in there, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, you're fine, Kelsey. That was some information. So, my question is, this is all anecdotal. I take the test, I'd be on a list, I could be on a list for two years. By the time my name comes up, I've gone on about other great employment. So, really, does the process allow us to hire the most qualified people coming, that's applying for the system or for the position? That's my biggest issue.
Are you speaking, Councilperson, just across the board in general?
Across the board, yes.
I think in our, in our minds, the test itself, you know, if we're providing quality testing, we're giving you the most qualified individuals, in theory. I think that there are some positions, there are some classifications, especially the higher up in the professional line that you get, where we struggle to recruit. We don't get a lot of applicants. And yes, we'd like to recruit, but there's, you know, there's some people in some of those hires, especially let's, for example, IT is a great example. We cannot compete monetarily with private business when, you know, our top-level IT position pays ninety-seven thousand dollars a year, and you can work in private sector and make twice that. We have to appeal to a different type of candidate, which is, is, are you, do you want to work in public service? Do you want to work for, you know, local government? I think those people are out there. So, in answer to your question, I think, honestly, sometimes we are. Sometimes I think we're getting the best, and I think sometimes we just as an organization can't compete with some of the, you know, with what's out there as well. Does that answer your question? Sort of. There's other ones like, you know, an entry lever position for clerk two, or refuse collector one, where, you know, we get, they're huge recruitment. We get lots of interest, we get lots of test sessions. You know, it's an excellent way in for a lot of people. But yes, I mean, the higher up you go, the more we struggle, for sure.
I have a question for the team, but I don't want to block any other council members. Anybody else had a question? About four and a half years ago, the city council did a comprehensive report on the status of gender and racial equity in the city with a multitude of recommendations. And I'm sorry, Alex isn't on the call today, but where do we stand in terms of implementing the recommendations that we adopted by resolution for diversity, equity, and gender parity? I think we've only accomplished two or three of those goals, and that's been within the last five years. What I'd like to see is a timeline, a Gantt chart, that you guys could produce about your implementation of our requests. And these are internal for the city. I don't know, Katie, if you've seen it?
I have not.
Or Kelsey?
I have not either. I knew of it. I've worked in the department long enough to know it existed, but, you know, you may have, you may all be aware that we are, you know, I am the interim chief at this moment. We have gone through, it will be our third chief examiner in the last five years. So, there is some, there is some continuity issues that we are, we are struggling with, but certainly we're aware of what come, I know what came out of that gender inequity pay study, which is just what we all suspected was in the gender inequity study. And, you know, I mean, I think that we have our baby wins, you know? We hired three female refuse collector ones, and we were like, yay, yay! But I think across the board, we all need to do better. We need to be more aware of it, we need to do better. And I know that something, I know something came out, but I don't know the specifics of what you guys wanted, or, you know, what implementation thing you had, so.
So, we are so excited that we have this opportunity, just for a few more minutes left with you, to really talk about how we can support you to implement those goals. So, there is a very specific call-out, a recommendation in a summarized form, that I think what we need to do is prioritize those, of what you think you can implement, and get some feedback from you. Is it a money problem? What are the barriers? Is it a money problem? Is it the fact that you need some support from other departments in terms of communication? What's the structure that you need in order to implement these things that we've asked to be done? And maybe have some metrics to reach? Because one of the things, just in brief, that came out of that is we recognized that we were not doing proper recruitment at the middle school age in order to show women in those jobs and people of color in those jobs by sending the people that we have on our staff into those communities to talk about careers, not just going to college fairs. We need to talk to children as they're entering high school, and even at that early high school age, when they're starting to think about higher education or what kind of careers they can attain. And so, we identified that as something that could really be successful, and I don't think we've implemented that. In speaking with the police force and the fire force, they said, you know, "We're sending, we're sending white guys in there, old white guys, and we've got to think about that." So, just a simple change like that doesn't cost any money, it's just, you know, to try to put that together. So, the other piece of it is financial, and I think that's something we need to address because what we're seeing is women are being hired at the lower end of the pay scale for the same job, and men are being hired at the higher end of the pay scale. One of those was military. They were getting extra bumps for military service, and a lot of women are not in military service. There are some, of course, in Spokane area, but that was really skewing the funding. And also, women are not typically as aggressive or overstate their abilities like men do sometimes. Sorry, guys. And so, they have no problem saying, "Well, I want the top dollar," you know? So, I think if we could maybe address some of that, just as inherent bias, what we were finding is women were starting at the lower end and men at the higher, and then it just, they were in that step program and they never could catch up. Also, for managerial and for career advancement, career path marking and modeling was something we suggested. Again, seems just, in general, men have no problem shooting high for jobs or sort of climbing the ladder. Women tend to be a little less aggressive in that, and so maybe some career path assistance and showing them how we actually have education available and training for them to get to the next level, or what it takes to get to the next level. And I've had ping from my LA candidate, who's watching, and she's just sent you the full report, so now you have both. Councilmember, welcome.
So, Councilmember, um, so are those, some of those issues to the HR, are those some systemic issues in the civil service itself? And could some of those be addressed by the rule review committee going forward? And then another area that's challenging to me is the temp seasonal. Because I have met generational folks who are working with the city, and they've all come through temp seasonal. Well, that's great, but what has been our marketing outreach to get others into the system through the temp seasonal process? So, that would be some areas of concern I'd like to address. So, kind of sounds systemic to me, but that's just me.
I agree with you, Councilmember, but I think we don't really have any, anything to do with the non-classified positions. The temp seasonals are sort of a, but I hear that story quite often from candidates, which is, "I'm on my fifteenth season working in the Parks Department as a temp seasonal," and at that point, it feels like, "Why aren't you a full-time employee?" Well, you're missing out on all the, now, I know some of the work, especially in a department like Parks, is very cyclical. You may only work the summer, or you may, they may only have, but there are lots of opportunities within the city to be, and I think that maybe we can, you know, do a better job of sort of outreach and communication to those folks of, "Hey, we've got these open-entry tests coming up. You should really be testing for jobs." So, I love that idea. I think that there was a push a few years ago when Giza was still our chief examiner to do much more of the sort of middle school, you know, high school recruitment. And I've kind of always joked over my course of time being in the city is, "Boy, I sure wish someone had told me when I was in high school that I could have been a police dispatcher and avoided, you know, twenty years of college loans and be making an excellent living, you know, and probably be retiring in five years." So, I think that, you know, I mean, I think that for a long time, fifty years, civil service really had this idea that all we have to do is open it and people will come, that we don't have to do outreach, that we don't have to do recruiting. And I think we've seen sort of what the long and long-run results of that is, which is we have a, you know, an aging, very white, very male-gomitated workforce, and that isn't going to fly for the future. And we all know, you know, I mean, diversity is a good thing. We want it. We want different voices, we want different opinions, we don't, we want, you know, different perspectives. And I think it will take a push. It's not going to be just civil service. It will be collaborative work with human resources in departments and management. Yes, Commissioner Kaskar?
Back on the question or the comments posed by Councilmember, how, if there is a discrepancy in pay between genders, how does the city establish what the pay scale is going to be for new hires? I mean, do we have a set of just, you know, okay, you, as you mentioned military service, okay, check the box military service. You have a two-year degree versus a four-year degree. I mean, are we, do we have a series of boxes that we check and that determines?
It is really meant to be very black and, yeah, it's really meant to be very black and white, and honestly, civil service has no role in pay, wages, any of that. It is, it is an HR function. But what Councilmember was speaking of is, at the police department specifically, if you're an open-entry police officer and you have a four-year degree, you get a bump in pay. If you have a two-year degree, you get a little bump in pay. If you have a master's degree, you get a higher bump in pay. If you have military service, they're going to give you a bump in pay. That isn't a norm, like a standard thing across the board, but what people can do is they can come in and look at those steps. In theory, everyone starts at step one as a new employee. Well, if I'm sitting in an interview and someone offers me a job and I've seen sort of what that step system, one through six, looks like, I can say, "Well, I've got fifteen years' experience. I want to start at step three," right? Or, "I want to start at step five."
But if you have the experience, why, why wouldn't you start at a higher step?
That's a great question.
I mean, I just, I think about these things, I just, I just think whatever the outcome is that we want is just based on objective criteria. Check the boxes, add it up, that's the outcome.
And I think that that will have to be, that would be an HR role to sort of decide what is that? Because really, right now, what it is, is it's on the, it's on the to-be, you know, the to-be-hired employee to be there and say, "Hey, I want more money." And clearly, we kind of all have, I mean, we've seen what has happened, is that men are more comfortable asking for that than women are. And so, women sort of start at step one because that's the standard, and I'm not sure it's appropriate. I mean, we can certainly have some sort of, like, I don't know, some communication when you're applying of, here's, we put the pay range in there, so here's what step one is, and here's what step six is, and when we open up positions. But we don't say specifically, "Hey, you should negotiate," right? And I think that there's probably something in there that, I agree, Commissioner, I mean, Councilman, I think there's, I'm sorry, I'm used to talking about too many different groups of people. I think that there should just be, if you meet, you know, if you fall within this number, you start at step one. If you fall within this number, you start at step two. But that seems like a process and a policy that would be driven by HR and not, not our place. But yes, what we want to say to everyone is, "Negotiate." "I didn't know you could do it." You know, I mean, when I started, I didn't know, and I, I left a much higher-paying job to come work for the city, and had I known, well, heck! But you just, a lot of people don't know that's even something you can ask for. So, anyway, did that answer your question? Okay.
Councilmember Kaskar, I will have, my ally send you the report too, the full report. So, you can see the systemic problem that Kelsey is talking about. It's rather dramatic, and it makes no sense, but it absolutely is happening, and we need to peel off the layers of the onion to find out why. And maybe some of that is training to our managers to ask questions of women. "Oh, have you ever run a business?" Many of us have had small businesses, and they find out that you've run a small business for ten, fifteen years, but they didn't mention that because they're in a current employment situation, or maybe they were doing it on the side. That could qualify them for a higher pay scale. So, just a little, that's just a quick example, I see Betsy nodding. Those are the kinds of things that are kind of gender-specific, and I think the big aha, it's certainly not an aha for most women. I'll put it that way. So, anyway, we should probably wrap this up. Katie, do you have anything to, final notes?
Yeah, just, and I can't remember who was asking earlier about some of the outreach, communication, education to our temp seasonal project positions. So, my position's new to the department as of this year, and my biggest goal is to help future and current employees navigate our various processes within civil service. And over the last few months, a new employee orientation, which all staff members, regardless of classification, are required to attend, I am I am doing a much more in-depth sort of what is civil service? How to navigate the process? And oh, if you're not a civil service employee, here's where you can look at upcoming examinations, helpful test tips and hints. Um, just really encouraging people to be proactive about a career here at the city and giving them hopefully the tools that they need to be successful.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for this great discussion. Is there anything else that you want to bring forward to us today, Katie and Kelsey? Great. Well, this brings us to the end of our study session unless council had anything further. Thank you, everyone, and stay safe out there. Have a wonderful holiday if you don't see. Thank you all. Bye-bye now.
Bye.